Okay.
Already?
It's loading the livestream.
Okay.
Is this everyone coming from?
Right. Spencer.
When did Spencer introduce himself?
At after roll.
Okay, alright. Alright, at 6:02 PM on December 2nd, I'm going to call this meeting of the Isle Vista Community Services District to order and announce that we are being, this meeting is being recorded and uploaded onto Zoom. Can you give us the roll call?
Director Brad?
Here.
What?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Obart?
Cpos?
Here.
Here.
Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Chumash people who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respects to the Chumash elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Aniscoyo, the land that Isle Vista sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Chumash community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Alright.
We have to go to Spencer for his.
Alright.
Hey, everyone. I am traveling on official government business, and so I'm using an AB2449 exemption. There is no one in the room with me.
Alright, moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull from that? Alright.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Alright, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Do we need to do?
Alright, yeah.
Director Brad?
Yes.
Director Cpos?
Yeah, sorry.
I missed something. Director Topf?
Yes.
Carmichael?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Obart?
Yes.
Alright, consent agenda passes. Now I'm going to open up the public comment period. At this time, any member of the public may speak on matters within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the Board of Directors that are not on the agenda. The Board will not take action on any item that is not on the agenda except as provided by law. Is there any public comments?
There's one on Zoom.
There's one on the Zoom? Alright.
Hello?
Hello?
May I be getting or should I?
Yeah.
Cool. Okay, so I've been, this is my second time in two days speaking to you guys more than any time in my life, so it's been, it's been quite nice. I was speaking with Spencer about this earlier today, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Associated Students. My name is Henry. I'm the internal vice president over here. And I want to speak in support of the cityhood study that is, I believe, on the table today, and you guys have been considering for some time. We spoke about this in a recent Senate meeting, which I showed up and spoke about my personal housing difficulties this quarter and how I think an established Ivy Cityhood would be able to step in and much more effectively help in situations like that. And I'm interested in that, that support from the Associated Students and being not only at the rhetorical or symbolic level, but also a financial one as well. And I know that funds are limited, and Ivy CSD tries to do as much as possible in the community, and it's not the easiest to do. And I think it's only logical for the association to take up some percentage of what the total cost would be. So I think that's the main reason I'm here, is to offer both my support as representative of students for this initiative and to explain that I think the best route for AS to truly be involved is to invest some of its own funds as a, as a sign that we want to be part of this movement towards, towards the city, and we care about this because we have an actual stake in it. We believe that, I mean, it obviously depends on what the actual sum would be, but something in the low five digits goes along the conversations I've been speaking with senators about. And obviously, that might change with time as, as conditions become clearer, but those are the conversations we're having on our end. And very grateful for your leadership and look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Is there any other public comments at this time?
Is another one on?
Another one on Zoom? Alright.
Is it my turn?
Yeah.
Hi, Board. It's good to see you all again. I'm Noah Lukin. I was there last night. I saw you guys two weeks ago, and I would just like to echo the internal vice president, Henry's sentiments, that Associated Students is fully committed to supporting this initiative of a cityhood study. And I will offer myself personally up to support in any way possible. And I will also be sure to advocate within the Senate as a senator myself that, or for any funding to be passed that Associated Students could help with for the study. So, yeah, one, offering myself up personally. I'd love to work with you guys and be involved in this because it's really important for the student body, many of whom live in Isle Vista. And then two, I will be working with senators to ensure the passing of funding to support you all in this. That is all. Thank you.
Alright, is there any, thank you for your public comment. Is there any other public comment at this time? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period and move on to our one and only discussion item, the Governance and Finance Research Project, which the Board will give direction to staff on a future staff report on governance and financing options. Alright, now I'm going to turn it over to our general manager.
Okay. So, Government and Finance Option Study, this is a first look at this, so definitely not the last time to talk about it. So why would we do a government and options finance study? So there's been a lot of reasons. The three top ones that we think justify moving forward is one, we've had a lot of support from residents and community groups encouraging us to look at this, and that's you know, it's something that's also been one of our strategic goals, which is looking at our level of governance, making sure we have enough resources to meet our needs, and ensuring our resources are being used well. Two of our specific points that we haven't gotten to yet, since we had a lot of extra work this quarter that we didn't originally plan for on Deltopia. But two things that we were looking at in our strategic plan is what are other revenue options that we could use to help improve public services? And also, let's look at how we can improve the governance, the current governance of Isle Vista. So it's in line with our strategic plan, and also, we've grown so much as an organization in seven years or eight years of establishment, and we've accomplished our original plan for service. So when the district was going through the approval process through the local agency formation commission, there was a plan for service of what would be accomplished, and we've gone way beyond that original plan of what the original tax and district would be doing. So these are reasons to start looking at the next step. There was a recent study done, there's been multiple studies done, but the most recent one's most relevant, which is 2015, it's attached in the folder. It looked at the feasibility of a municipal advisory council, which is pretty much free and does not have much authority, a community service district, which is what we obviously created, and a city. And it concluded a city wouldn't be financially feasible, and there's a lot of reasons why it concluded that, some intentional, some unintentional. But the focus of the study was really the community service district, so not enough, I'd say, as someone who's on the committee at the time, not enough focus was given to cityhood. And it was not as prioritized because a lot of the community energy was going towards a CSD already. And a MAC is just not, not what we want. We're obviously looking at having greater control of our community, and a MAC would not do that. It's just advisory to account. And then a lot of changes have happened in Isle Vista since 2015, actually a huge number of changes. These are three very specific ones. One is change of ownership of a lot of parcels, but specifically, most of Del Playa, which is the most highly valued property in Isle Vista. So those changed ownership, which means they got reassessed, and that means they, you know, it's a higher amount on the tax rolls. Measure our past, the voters approved that 85%, and that's bringing in right now 1.5 million in revenue that the community never had, that's directly controlled locally. And we've been established, obviously, and we've been able to figure out solutions to issues, targeted solutions, cheaper solutions sometimes. You've also learned the real cost of things. Some things are more expensive than we thought, some things are cheaper. So a lot of, these are three key governance changes since the last study was done. What would a new study do? So, a new study would not be the full study, it's the last bullet point there, but when you're creating a city, there's a really comprehensive fiscal analysis, it's a pronoun word, oh, not pronoun. I'm forgetting my grammar terms. Proper noun. Yeah, there we go, I knew it was P. That's, that's a very specific thing, so this would be a precursor to that. It's more of a go or no-go study, like, let's look at the basic facts, let's look at, you know, is there something there potentially? Let's, let's, you know, see, be, have eyes wide open before we go down a very extensive process. So it would look at, you know, tax options to finance the city, look at our current tax base, and also look at the impacts of Santa Barbara County, because they will spend less money on things because of this, and they'll also transfer taxes to the new city. So, and look at all these things and say, you know, is it possible, will the county have a big impact, small impact, no impact? And give us a good sense of where things will go next. Then recommended action for the Board is to authorize us to solicit proposals from companies and bring something back for the Board to approve, or multiple options. And also to authorize us to bring in some light in-house research work, which some of what we can do, some of it we're just not equipped to do, just to start getting prepared and being more aware of what will go into this. Luckily, you know, I was involved in the last study, and we do have lots of people in our network who've been involved in this kind of work that we can get started lightly with. And we think that the cost of the study will be $60,000 to $100,000 based on the cost of the last two studies that were done. And I have had, you know, I will admit, I've had a conversation with EPS, the company, three to four years ago, a long time ago, when we were flirting with the idea then, and that was about the price they said at that point too. So that's what we're, what we are recommending as our next steps on this project.
Alright. Alright, now I'm going to open it up to the Board for comment on this, or questions? Are there any?
Yes. Hi, I was wondering, what is the difference in what is going to be, what is going to be different from the 2015 study?
Well, the 2015 study was extremely expansive and looking at pretty much every single option governance-wise, and it was very focused on making the CSD work. Right, like, there was legislation going out at the same time. There was, obviously, it was looking at all the options, but it was really focused on the CSD, the CD's actually in the appendix, so it's that much in the, in the back. So this one would be more focused on that option, and it would be also more locally driven towards the goal we want. I mean, when you commission a study, you're giving consultants the goal. You're not always going to get to hit that goal because of the facts, but it wasn't a goal to create a city in the last study. It just simply wasn't. It was, we wanted to look at the numbers, look at the feasibility, but we didn't spend as much time on that part of the study as we could have. Well, not that we could have, there were other priorities at the time. So that's how this one would be different, is that it would be more focused on the city part, and it would take into account all the changes since then. And now you'd have a local government in Ivy who's directing it. Like, last time it was a committee of lots of people, but no one on that committee except for one person worked in local government in Isle Vista. But, you know, obviously, things were different back in 2015.
Are there any other questions from Board members?
Okay, I have more questions. I don't know how.
And I don't have all the answers yet, so we'll collect them, yeah.
So are you envisioning that this would be a partnership between Associated Students and the Ivy CSD in terms of, like, the contractual obligation and responsible parties? How would that work?
Yeah, we'll work it out with AS, and they have offered to help pay a part of the study, so that's definitely something, you know, as both, both of us would be customers to making sure what the end work product is. But we might hold the direct contract, it's easier logistically, so we'll, we'll work with them to figure out what makes sense, but.
Do we know, can AS?
There's a couple on Zoom.
Hello, people. Um, do we know, can one AS legislative body obligate a future legislative body, AS body, to a contract, and they do, multiply your contracts?
Noah has his hand up.
Yes.
Noah, do you want to answer that?
Answer that?
Yeah, we can commit funding to a project that can be used for multiple years. But in terms of a specific contract, we can also sign those that would necessitate association action in the future. Yeah, I hope that helps.
But you can bind a future AS legislative body?
AS lease is the Pardal Center. That's a multi-year lease.
Yeah, okay.
That started when I was president, I signed this lease, and they're still on that lease. But I'm going to have his hand up too.
Yeah, I mean, the, the simplest route, and the one which illustrates that things can very much be long-term, is you can make a change to legal code if there's some kind of new program you would want to add on if, you know, let's say, under the external vice president for local affairs office, you want to lay out the function directly under someone's position maybe, or just that it's a, it's a function of the office that we want to support the push for cityhood in Isle Vista, and we're going to allocate an X amount of money to this every year, that's a possibility. Might not be the most sensible route because it's, you know, this isn't an ad infinitum type thing, this is with a, hopefully, a set date that this is accomplished. But there are definitely mechanisms for laying out funding over several years.
Alright, thank you for that answer. And.
Yeah, I was wondering, like, how AS is committing that funding right now? Is this, like, certain members' support to push for funding for it? Or is it, like, I don't understand how that works, so wouldn't that have to be approved by AS?
Yes. Yeah, so it's, it's essentially just, like, at the federal level, the legislative has the power of the purse. Noah is a senator, obviously, and would be in support of it. I very much am as well, and that conversation would, of course, have to be put in front of the Senate. But we've, you know, spoken to our colleagues pretty extensively and are pretty confident about the, about the sentiment behind this.
Spencer went to the Senate meeting two weeks ago to speak in general.
That's kind of what I was wondering, is if it's, like, more leaning towards yes or no?
Sounds good. Are there any other questions from Board members?
I'm certainly aware that Isle Vista Cityhood has been a goal of the community for many decades. And it seems like there's a pretty strong political pushback that has been part of the environment always. Are you aware of anything different in the environment, and can you remind us, like, what the steps would be after the study was completed?
For sure. I'll start with the steps. And then, so the steps are, let's say the study comes back and says, you have a good shot of some kind, whatever, however it says that. Then there's two ways to start the process. One is the voters can sign a petition, 20% of them, and that initiates the process. The other one is the CSD board, or any of the other boards that represent Ivy, including the Board of Supervisors, can pass a resolution starting the process. So it's a resolution or a petition, it would be the next step after this. And then that begins the process at LAFCO, which I could not begin to detail all the steps there, but you're, it's an interactive process where the district, the applicant, let's say where the applicant works with LAFCO to conduct the comprehensive fiscal analysis, and that really digs deep into the taxes and the costs. And then, so that's the math part, and then it moves into more of a political part, where you look at the impact of the county, you negotiate things like the revenue neutrality agreement if you need to, or the opposite of a net revenue neutrality agreement. So you would go through the negotiations, then all that, like, and then you'd see if there's a deficit, let's say the city needs another million dollars. Maybe that gets packaged into the formation proposal, so all these different things go, like, a revenue neutrality agreement or not, the boundaries, the new tax or not, like, all these things, they go to LAFCO for a final look and approval. So LAFCO votes to put it to the ballot. That's where we failed three times. Well, not we, but, you know. In the past, it's failed three times at that point, so it's gotten to that point three times, three and a half times even, because in 2001, they, when Galita was becoming a city, they were going through their process, and then they did a side process for Isle Vista, and then that, you know, they looked at it, they said, no, we'll do it another time, we'll deal with it another time, and then they were dealt with. But, yeah, so LAFCO makes the final vote, then it goes to the voters, and the voters need to, you know, say yes to all of the conditions. They don't get to negotiate, you gotta approve it or not approve it. And then the city has a formation date, so it's like the simple timeline and.
Nothing simple about it.
Yeah, nothing simple at all. The easiest step is this step, which is doing the study and the numbers, like, running the numbers. So the political part of it, you know, LAFCO is way different than even in 2015. We did not have any friends on LAFCO almost, well, we had, I shouldn't say any, but we had very few friends there, even in 2015 when we were forming the district. I think from Jay being on LAFCO had a huge impact on, you know, explaining Isle Vista issues to the Board there. We've had Joan Hartman on LAFCO, who used to represent us, and she's, she's still there. So I think LAFCO has changed fundamentally, even how they approach service reviews is more correct now. Like, they're becoming a more, I'd like to say, normal LAFCO. Ours was kind of out of sync with other counties 10 years ago, that's my opinion, but they were. Like, if you look at how other LAFCOs operated, which we did back then, ours was kind of on its own, and had a almost bias against Isle Vista from what we experienced at the time. So I don't think that's there anymore. I think LAFCO is very, been, we've worked, had a great relationship working with the new executive director and the current commission, so that's a big change.
And are we aware of any other areas in the county that are trying to become cities?
Yeah, so Supervisor Bob Nelson got in the county budget funding to do a cityhood study for Orket, which is a community he represents.
So that study is going through already?
I don't know what the status is, but I know that he secured funding for that as kind of supervisor for that area.
So we might be on a similar path, a timeline, as Orket?
Maybe a little behind, maybe around the same potentially, but it does, it is probably a good thing to be both going at the same time.
What is the population of Orket?
Forty thousand.
Forty, okay, so they're, like, twice as big as we are.
They're bigger, yeah.
If you, if the financial feasibility study came back with positive results, do you think LAFCO would approve it?
I mean, it is a discretionary vote, but I think we'd have a lot more in our favor at this point, and yeah, I think they would. I mean, I can't say guaranteed, but I think we, we have, as a current existing special district, we have relationships now with the other special districts who have people in LAFCO, for example, we have relationships with the cities, I mean, we're a different situation now than we were before, so it was a lot of bias, and, you know, I wasn't there for the ones in the 70s and 80s, but there were other things beyond the fiscal feasibility that were preventing the vote. I mean, there was, you know, partisan political considerations were taken into account that probably shouldn't have been, but they were. I hope those things don't happen now, I can't guarantee, but.
And I think you already mentioned this, I'm going to ask Dan though, is, so after the LAFCO, if LAFCO approved it, then it would go to the voters? Or in the county, does the county have any say in what happens?
The county has a say in terms of the revenue neutrality, like, if the study comes back saying that the county's gonna lose money on this, like, we will take more taxes than they lose expenses. This is very unlikely, but I don't know, it could happen. That's what happened to Galita. They negotiated 30% of their property tax and 25% of their sales tax forever to the county, presumably to fund Isle Vista issues. And so that's how that negotiation played out. They agreed to that, the proponents, and they got into the measure, and it went to the voters, and the voters approved that. So that's, yeah, I mean.
The county does, they.
LAFCO takes into account, LAFCO takes their.
What the county says.
Yeah, it is part of the Cortez-Knox-Hurtsburg Act to consider these things, so it's not just something random, like, it is part of the legislation of cityhood that you need to look at the impact of the county.
Yeah. Alright, are there any other Board questions? Alright, I'm going to close.
Sorry.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Start to you first.
I feel everyone's Annabelle's paid now because I'm realizing that we don't show up on the TV when we raise our hands. I appreciate the discussion, I just wanted to kind of provide my, my thoughts. I don't disagree with anything that Jonathan has said and kind of introducing this, but I do want us to be focused in terms of, like, what this study is. It's a giant math equation in a lot of ways, and it's actionable information for the community to, to understand, do we have enough revenue to support the services that the community is asking for? And what it's not is, you know, binding our Board to a decision in the future. It's not a substitute for community outreach and involvement in terms of answering the question, would, if it was financially feasible, people in Isle Vista want to have a city? And obviously, it's not a substitute for the process that Jonathan talked about. So I really view this as, like, you know, it was done in the early 2000s, it was done in the 2010s. It's been another 10 years, and, you know, we have strong community support, even the potential for financial partnership to fund this. And really, this is about taking advantage of that and refreshing the data that we have to fit the current context.
And then I was just wondering, um, why is AS interested in this? It's really exciting, but it feels like really sudden.
We think it's the right thing to do. And it's within the context of a generation of people who were elected this spring, who have recognized that we have underspent the rather ridiculous budgets we are given by students every year, and then it's worth spending on genuinely impactful initiatives in the community immediately around us. And I, I think the way I've thought of it, and I think, you know, Noah has his own motivations and his, his own way he's approached this, but I had a conversation with Spencer about this, and I told him the story of, you know, the area of the world I'm from, where there was a nonprofit who was building a school in this kind of remote village, and they asked for the local community to pitch in their own bricks, their own materials, and this kind of thing to build the school. And of course, nonprofit didn't materially need that, it was one of the wealthiest in the world, but that was so that the community would, would feel that they were a part of that school, and they had had previous conflicts and this kind of thing, where property was looted in this. So it's just like basic human psychology, that if you have invested your own resources, your own time into something, you're much more likely to take care of that as it goes on, and as the difficulties of the process appear, you'll be much more invested because you literally have skin on the game. That's the idea behind it, and I think, I think life would be measurably better with a city in Ivy rather than the patchwork we currently have. And that seems to be a pretty common sentiment on our end.
Thank you for that. Alright, are there any other Board questions? Yes.
Sorry.
There'll be a public comment section after the Board questions, yeah.
Jonathan, you said, I want to ask you what was different between now and 2015. One of the things you said was the change in ownership on the parcels on DP. And is what you're saying that there's additional revenue coming from property tax, and so, so that's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
What kind of difference are we looking at?
That's what the study was. I have an estimate, but I don't know. I can do my own estimate, but I couldn't tell you.
Sure.
Are there any other Board questions before I open up public comment? Alright, seeing none, I'm going to open up public comment on this issue. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this? Alright, yeah, that's one.
Yeah. I'll start off by saying that my friend Henry, who's not here tonight, but we were talking about this earlier too. And he mentioned how UCFP is one of the UC campuses that is an incorporated area in actually the city. So so, kind of to what this individual from Associated Students was saying, if it would provide a better facilitation to local community management and integration with the campus, the university. And what, what I wanted to say also is your name was? Jonathan, Jonathan had, had mentioned that the study back in 2001, it was during. It was during that time when Galida was, was going into cityhood. Galida also was an incorporated sphere of influence of the city of Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara Airport and the university. And so there was, when that happened, there, it came with a development, some kind of an infrastructural development in pointing out the Camino Real Shabique Center that was created around that time. So here in Iowa Vista, for something like this, anything that gets spotlighted or planned into the future as some kind of a financial revenue generating business commerce producing opportunity is, is a good thing. It will strengthen the proposal to show some kind of aid or infrastructural financial development that strengthens the security of cityhood.
Thank you for your public comment. Are there any other public comments? Are there any on Zoom?
There's no recess.
All right. I will close public comment and reopen board comment one last time. Are there any other board comments on this issue? All right, seeing none. Oh, yes.
Too, too fast. Brain doesn't work. So I guess what I would like to say is, this is a really big step. And it's kind of an unprecedented step, I think, to have AS and IV CSD working together and something like this. And I think it's very significant. And I think it's worth doing our own political outreach to make sure that there are, that we inform people what we're doing. I think laying the, laying the groundwork and letting, letting people know what's happening is, it's an important step for us. So I just have the comment I wanted to make.
Yeah, I'd like to grant that because if I'm understanding correctly, this feasibility study is really just financial number stuff. But as Spencer said earlier, you know, this is not a substitute for a community outreach. And I would love to have, you know, as robust, more robust, you know, community outreach and like, I guess like a community feasibility study, you know, in addition to this financial one. So just stop getting upset.
So the study you said was estimated to be sixty to a hundred thousand?
Yeah, so we'll come back with the actual bit, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I have just something to consider. I don't know if it would be important to do the community outreach first before committing sixty to a hundred thousand dollars to a study, just to make sure that the people that are representing are interested in this, like as a, as a step going forward.
I think this motion is just to ask for the solicitation of proposals.
Yeah, so we're committing no money.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And then we're, yeah, we're just looking at proposals. And then that could probably be something on an agenda next time at the, at the end of the meeting. And Spencer, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was gonna second, I think, the thing that you guys already came to, which is that this is really just authorizing staff to bring back a proposal. And so that, that, when that proposal comes back, I think that would be the time where we could share things that we're interested in. One, one thing that I'm definitely interested in is seeing how we can partner with the different arms of the university. Obviously, Associated Students has a core partner, had a, a core funding partner. But also trying to see what we can do on the researcher side to involve students in the research process, because a lot of this will be very technical and financial sort of work. And then, and I would just reiterate what, what I already said again for the record, which is that this is a, really doing a math equation. This is not committing the board to a decision one way or another. But we do need to have the numbers before we know what to ask people about when we do public outreach and how to talk to people about it.
I think at the, at the end of the meeting, a board member would be welcome if someone wants to add that as a future agenda item. All right, are there any other board comments on this issue?
All right.
Sorry. My name is Jose Abayisum.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we speak, can you reopen public comment to allow it and then close it after?
Okay, I will reopen public.
Thank you.
Jose, just speak.
I always just had a question. Is this open for a disabled person, people like myself? I may not look disabled, but I have brain injuries and back problems. And I wonder if this is open for people like, like myself.
Are you reference, what are you referencing being open? Where do you, where do you?
I'm, I'm disabled. Right now I'm homeless. But I, I grew up in IV. This is my, my street, my house. And I'm, I'm new on this and I would love to participate. I would love to be, to be part of it.
Yeah.
If that's possible.
I think, I think we will probably be doing community out. It seems like there's a lot of people on the board that want to do a community outreach. It's outreach as a part of this proposal. So I think that will, that will be a part that you can participate in.
Yeah. Yeah, a community outreach is able and accessible to all community members regardless of, you know, our community member, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comment. All right, I will now close public comments. And I don't think there's any other board members who would like to speak. So with that, I will move, make a motion to authorize staff to solicit proposals from consulting agencies who could perform this study and begin in-house research work ahead of engaging a consultant. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All right. And can we get a roll call vote?
Yeah, excuse me. Director Brett?
Yes.
Director Seepoos?
Yes.
Director Topliff?
Yes.
Director Carmichael?
Yes.
Pullah?
Yes.
Obart?
Yes.
And Dashlu?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes. All right, we will now go into closed session to discuss a conference with real property negotiations or negotiators under government code five, four, nine, five, six, point eight to discuss property, the property six, five, seven, five, Sibyl Road in Iowa Vista. And the negotiation will be between this community service district and the Iowa Vista Co-op. And under negotiation is the price in terms of payment. Following that, we will do a general manager evaluation. All right, and that unfortunately is closed to the public.
Unless there's public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Unless there's a public comment on the closed session items. Thank you.
Thank you.
So for everyone on Zoom, we're going to end the live stream and keep.